Good evening. Welcome to Town of Berniston Select Board Meeting for Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:07 PM. And just a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast live on BNTV and livestreamed on YouTube. To find BNTV on YouTube, go to youtube.com and search for Berniston Northfield Community Television. This meeting will be available for later viewing by following the link at thetownofberniston.org. You can also watch Channel 1075 on your Comcast dial in Berniston. First up tonight are the warrants. Now entertain a motion for the payroll warrant in the amount of $68,319.53.
So moved.
Second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion for the vendor warrant in the amount of $1,127,968.82.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, just a note on that, the biggest portion of this payment is the interest on the fire truck of $45,796.80 and then also the payoff of the fire truck loan of $987,000. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes. Entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of August 6th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of August 13th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion for the special meeting minutes of August 19th, 2025.
So moved.
And I'll second that.
Can I abstain?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Calendar announcements. The Farm Table is hosting a kids neon dance party on Friday, August 22nd from 6:30 to 9:30 PM at the barn at the Farm Table. Cost is $5 per person. Kids are encouraged to wear their brightest neon outfits and dance the night away under the black lights. The Family and Community Events Planning Committee will meet on Thursday, August 21st at 3:30 PM at the Town Hall. The Tax Work Off Program Committee will meet on Tuesday, August 26th at 9:30 AM at the Town Hall. The Conservation Commission will meet on Tuesday, August 26th at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall. The Planning Board will meet on Wednesday, August 27th at 1:00 PM at the Town Hall. The Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on Thursday, August 28th at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall. And just a special note, that the Town Hall offices will be closed September 1st, 2025 in recognition of the Labor Day holiday. No citizen concerns that I can see in the audience. We have no new appointments tonight. So the first up is new business. A new alcohol license option in Massachusetts became effective July 1st, 2025. Governor Maury Healy recently signed legislation with Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12D, that permits certain alcohol license holders to upgrade their existing licenses, specifically businesses that currently hold a Section 12 Wine and Malt License for on-premises consumption, such as Antonio's Pizza and Hillside Pizza. They may now apply to exchange their license for a non-transferable all-alcohol license, which would allow them to serve spirits in addition to wine and beer. This trade-in will not impact the total available quota for the town. Uh-oh, lost the camera. Uh, before this upgrade can be offered locally, the Berniston Select Board, acting as a local licensing authority, must formally accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12D, and submit a memo of acknowledgement to the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. Town Administrator will reach out to the two qualifying businesses to determine their interest in pursuing the license upgrade contingent upon the Select Board's acceptance of this new law. So we have some discussion points here. What do we feel the potential economic or community impacts of allowing an all-alcohol license for these businesses? So it'd be similar to the license that the Farm Table holds, where they have an all-alcohol license at Zeke's up at Crump and Fox, similar license to what they have. It would simply allow these other two to serve.
Why did we distinguish between the two different groups?
That was all they initially applied for.
Ah, okay.
At those two establishments, typically establishments like theirs typically don't serve, I'm gonna call it hard alcohol.
Right, typically.
Beer and wine is typically not a mixed drink. This, I'm not sure why the governor did this. It didn't have any other data with it, right?
Right.
It was what the ABC put out.
The one thing too, as we think this through is these, if they upgrade to these other like, this new license, it is non-transferable. So that means if Hillside sells the business, you can't transfer the license to the new owner, meaning they would have to apply
Separately.
I mean, straight up for it, whereas anytime, like the brewery, we kind of, you know, those are very easily transferable licenses if you, to trade the farmer's brewer permit and these malt and wine permits. So it's just something to think about because that, getting a license isn't easy, you know, to do. It takes a minute.
That's a good point.
So just think, just to have that.
I mean, I think, two points. I'd reach out to the two to see if they would even be interested and talk to Chief Paul Mary to see if he sees any
Right.
potential issues that we may not see before we go any farther on that. I mean, I don't know what you guys think. Does that seem fair if we do bring this back to the table?
Yep. And then I don't know about question three, the public hearing. I don't know if we need to do any of that, because you are the approval authority for the licensing authority.
Right, right. I mean, I think we had to do that initially, when they initially got their licenses.
Right.
The way the governor has this written, I think, I don't think we need to do another public hearing unless they specifically say that in the verbiage.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is the reference to public hearing whether the town changes and accepts that, or is it whoever they come in for?
Just a question. Karen came up with, just trying to get us to think about different things. So she just mentioned that. It wasn't as part of the
Right.
new law, new law of Governor's.
So there's no, no need for public hearing for it to change?
No.
Unless we want to do one. I think we could do one.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not required, but if you wanted to ask the butters, you could, but it's not required.
Let's do those couple of things first and then we can bring it back. If nobody wants it.
So I'll talk to Craig and Clayton and we'll follow up.
Perfect. Next up, the Green Community Competitive Grant Contract Documents. The Department of Energy Resources, DOER, Green Communities Division, has awarded the Town of Berniston $164,550 in a grant through its competitive grant program. This funding will support the installation of a VRF heat pump system at the Powers Institute, a project that was proposed in Berniston's grant application and determined to meet the program's eligibility requirements. Due to the competitive nature of the grant, the funds must be used exclusively for the approved project. This funding designated for the installation of a VRF heat pump system at the Powers Institute represents a significant investment in the town's energy efficiency and sustainability goals. We are grateful to DOER for recognizing the merit of our proposal and for supporting our efforts to reduce energy consumption and promote cleaner technologies. The Select Board affirms its commitment to complying with all applicable Massachusetts general laws, including General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3A, MBTA Communities Act, as required for receipt of these funds. We look forward to working with DOER and the Green Communities team to successfully implement this project and advance Berniston's leadership in environmental stewardship. So I entertain a motion for the Select Board to accept the $164,550 grant awarded by the Department of Energy Resources, Green Communities Division, and authorize the Town Administrator to sign the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just congratulations to the Green Committee for all the hard work that went into it.
Jane and Chris Swiss, in particular, did a ton of work to write and rewrite multiple times the grant application.
It's a big chunk of money.
And that is, that is a big award. Hey, you want to say anything, Jane, at all or not?
Well, our original request was for the entirety of the PI building. And they refused that and told us, suggested really strongly, that we resubmit without the museum level in, in the grant. So that was the big rewrite that we did. And so this is just for the senior center floors over there. And I do have, I do, I did on my own, without anybody's permission, get a quote for doing the museum, which we can talk about another time.
And the reason they didn't support the museum was because it currently was an unheated space.
It was a
Currently an unheated space, so they didn't want to pay for the original heat for that building. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's awesome. Old business, the resurgence of the Town Newsletter. Karen, I'm gonna kind of turn this one over to you, because you've done a ton of research on this with this company, if you don't mind giving us some information of it.
Yep.
That's what these are, Brian, the examples.
So I, LPI is, is the company, a community newsletter program that our senior center currently uses. So Jane kind of turned me back onto this, because I was under the impression that they only serve senior center newsletters. So I made contact, I actually contacted Senior Center Director Pam Parmakian, she heard her contact and spoke with the lady, and she forwarded me this nice packet that you have in front of you that has examples of some templates for a town newsletter. It would be, the hope is for it to be a monthly, a monthly newsletter. It's free of charge to our organization within the parameters that we agree upon. LPI looks for the number of copies we'll need and the method of distribution. They take care of all of that. They handle the aspects of the advertising, and then of course, that's where they get their money from. That pays, that, that's their funding. The publications are full colored, stapled, and delivered to the location specified by our account. And I guess I was thinking these would be mailed to our residents' homes.
Who pays for that?
That, that's part of, that's, they pay for it. It's all, yep. They have a publication support team available to assist with any questions that we may have, you know, to launch this. They wouldn't really be able to do the very first newsletter until November. It would take, you know, time to get that sponsorship and the advertisements together. As an LPI customer, we'd have access to their digital content library that would help me create the, you know, the pictures and the, the media files for the newsletter. The plan would be for myself and input from the town departments, town boards, committees and commissions to provide content for the newsletter, thinking about spotlighting a resident in town, maybe spotlight one of our teachers, spotlight employee of the town. We, I think we would have no problems filling the content. But specifically, it would be to announce our, the most, you know, having an up-to-date one, one piece of media that lists and hosts all of the events going on in town, because that's the biggest thing that we, the biggest complaint or feedback we've been, we've been getting from the town is there is, there isn't a, people miss the newsletter. Yes, we have the website. Yes, we send out correspondence here and there, but they, a lot of people have really been asking for the newsletter to make a return. So.
And I know you and I briefly talked about it, Karen, as far as the management of this, that you kind of kick it off and potentially somebody in the tax work off program could assist with
Exactly.
organizing some of the content.
Yeah, we, yeah, let's get it up and running and then we can transition it to some, to, you know, a permanent place down the road. But I really think, I know there's people that are interested in providing article. I, I think it really would be not as hard as, not that hard, is my point.
Jane, your comment?
So it will be news about what the Select Board is doing?
What any, every, all our boards, committee and commissions are doing, you know, yeah, just like, no, no different than your other
It would be up to each board committee to submit a
Right.
You may not have like the planning board in here every single month. They may be in their head doing it quarterly or biannually or
Right, we may have something special.
Once or twice a year.
She also said showcasing one of your businesses in your town. For example, we could open it up to one of our, you know, you could own a business here and, you know, there's all kinds of creative things to
Whoever gets their idea in first.
Yeah. And we can't have a trial period. So let's say we do this for a couple of months and it's not working out, then that's another.
We could have crossword puzzles.
Yeah, we could do a crossword puzzle, right.
I mean, it's worked out well for the senior center.
Right. And Pam doesn't pay a dime. So it's the same thing for us.
I want to say, I want to throw a monkey wrench.
Sure.
Back many years ago, I was very involved with the COA and the Senior Center. And we had, I don't know if it was the same company, we had a company who was doing the newsletter, and it was no cost to us, because it was all being paid for by the ads that they got from the locals. I wish I could remember how long they did the newsletter for us. And then they came one day and said, "We can't do your newsletter anymore, because we don't have enough advertisers from your area."
And we don't do it.
And so they
Live and learn, right?
So the newsletter stopped until whoever got it started again with this company. So to think that this same company is going to be soliciting the same area for two newsletters gives me concern. There are only three ads in the Senior Center newsletter. I think I counted right. Did you count them?
I did not, but I think you're right.
So, you know, maybe, maybe more people would be interested in putting an ad in a town newsletter as opposed to a senior newsletter.
I personally would think they might be, because if this is mailed to everybody's home, the Senior Center one is not.
No, it's mailed to some.
Like 60 people they mail it out, yeah.
Yeah, if you've requested it to be mailed.
Which is fine. I mean, I know where they are. I can go get one if I want one. But if this is actually mailed to their home, advertising might become easier, because they know every month their business is going to show up at every, how many mailing addresses
Seven hundred and some.
Um, no, more than that, I guess.
Seven or eight hundred is not much, any more than that, which should, once a month, that ad's going to flash into their house. Whether they read it or not is another story.
Right.
If it's not going to cost us, I think it's worth a shot. If they were to come back and say, "Hey, it's not going to pan out. It's going to cost you $4,000 a year to do it," well, then we reconsider it.
My other
Per time.
Right. That's, that's my other concern. How much time does
I think Karen's thinking initially, it's not going to be a huge lift.
Yeah, I, I, I really think this, it, I don't think it's going to be a huge lift, but I think this is a, a huge priority for us. That, I think this is really important. So I'm, I'm okay with that.
And I know we also spoke briefly about potentially going to the library trustees and saying, is this something like, because Karen Fitzpatrick, a past librarian, took this over and did it. Would they consider doing
Not Karen Fitzpatrick.
Karen.
Yeah.
Stigfeld. Stigfeld, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a lot of hours to put, and Karen was doing
Smaller than this.
Well.
It's smaller.
The old one had every single department and committee in every single publication.
Only if they, only if they submitted.
They didn't, didn't miss.
And it was quarterly.
Right.
I just think since it's a free endeavor too, it's worth a try, that's all. And I'll be the first to come online if it's some, you know, but I, I, I think, you know, it's free. There's no hidden fees or charges.
The residents have been asking for it.
The residents have been asking for it. We can add it to the website too. We can have it mailed to their homes. What if I don't have enough content? We can help, they said. Provides free images and content for you to use, large and small, puzzles, articles, graphics, photos. We can fill it. So let's say it is a long week and I don't get, you know, whatever. I, I, I think it's just worth a try. And like I said, it would be something we could transition when, when we find the right person to turn it over to, to take it over, you know, an editor, whatever you want to call that, you know. But I think
Did they tell you how much we chime in?
Yeah, November would, wouldn't be the, oh, oh, let's say you're talking per
I'm saying if it, if the newsletter comes out the first week of the month, what's the deadline for getting it to them?
Like two weeks before.
It's, so two weeks, leave then?
Maybe, yeah, something like that. I mean, I'm sure it's in here somewhere. I believe that's what she had stated. And the only thing they have, they don't have a contract. It's a service agreement, and that would be what we would need to, your approval for, to get this started.
And we can cancel it anytime?
Yeah, it's, um, the, yeah, includes, let me see.
Do they give
The term is, oh, excuse me?
I'm sorry. I thought you were looking, so I was going to ask another question.
The agreement commences immediately and shall continue in effect for three consecutive service years. So it's a three-year service agreement. There is unlimited access to We Create. If we wanted to, it is a value of $500 a year, but it's free, just so you know. I'm trying to see how you can get, let me, I will make sure I find out.
You have to notify the provider in writing of the decision
Thank you.
Non-renew service
There you go.
At least 180 days prior to the expiration of the agreement term.
There you go.
So it automatically renews after three years, unless we say we don't want it, or unless they say they don't want it?
Right.
In the writing. My question was going to be, do they supply a web-friendly copy?
Yes.
Because you can go online and look at the Senior Center newsletter. You can get the Senior Center newsletter in your email. You can get a printed copy.
They do all that?
Yeah, it says the
It's the same company that does their newsletter, so it's the same service.
The written copy is in seven business days. The digital version will be available within two hours of you submitting it. Anybody have any other questions for Karen about it? Who knows the most about it?
I do like the idea. People have said something to me also, wanting the newsletter back. And I caution them, it's, you know, it costs money to do that. And so I'm glad to hear that they don't, don't charge. But to Jane's point, hopefully they get enough advertisers to pay for it.
Yeah.
And if they don't, it wouldn't be profitable for them, for them, and they would probably suggest a fee which we could accept or reject.
Correct, yeah.
All right. I would entertain a motion to accept the service agreement with LPI for participation in the Communities Newsletter Program.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Other business, the Franklin Regional Transit Authority.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Do we have to come up with a name?
Yes, probably eventually, yep.
You only got one in mind?
Yeah, do you have one?
Fall Town News.
Oh, there you go.
You gotta be careful that you don't choose a name that's been categorized or whatever they do with names.
I bet they researched it.
And I'll do all that with them. They're, I'm going to be working with someone. It's not, I'm not on my own here. They, they assign a person, so.
Another thing we could merge with Lyden, and we could put their stuff in there too, all right? Share the cost.
They're already, they already do a newsletter.
Oh, do they?
Yes, they do. Northfield already does a newsletter.
Yeah.
Northfield's is produced by Citizens at No Cost to the Town.
And Catherine does Lyden's.
And I think Catherine is the same, I mean, Lyden is the same.
And they mail them to every household?
Theirs are online, I think. I think Lyden's is online only, but
I'm curious how they get No Cost to the Town, if they do mail it.
I'm not sure if they're mailing it in Northfield. I just know that it's all donation.
It's good.
And then if there was any, like, there is that $2,000 budget with the newsletter, is that, like, I don't, this, we wouldn't need to tap into that at all, but let's say there was some, something I needed to do, would that be okay, or is that?
We'd have to bring it up to
Yeah, okay.
Discuss it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Michael Peral, Assistant Administrator at the FRTA, is requesting for the town to submit a letter identifying FY26 Primary and Alternate FRTA Advisory Board Members, as defined by Mass. General Law 161B, Section 5. Section 5 defines advisory board members as the chairman of the Select Board or the Town Administrator of each town. Therefore, I entertain a motion to appoint Karen Kelly, Town Administrator, and Pam Parmakian, Senior Center Director, as the primary and alternate members of the Franklin Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. On August 19th, yesterday, the Select Board, with members of the Finance Committee, resumed talks regarding the 20% increase in the health insurance rates scheduled to take effect on October 1st, 2025. The latest adjustment is expected to impose a substantial financial strain on municipalities and school districts participating in the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, particularly those with smaller populations or limited fiscal flexibility. The town also acknowledges the impact on its employees, as rising insurance costs may offset any potential salary adjustments. In response, the town is actively exploring collaborative solutions, including a partnership with the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, which is pursuing a strategic and inclusive approach to support all member communities. For now, the situation remains fluid, and the town will likely continue to explore a combination of strategies and address the escalating healthcare costs and insurance, and ensure the long-term sustainability of the employee benefits. In the meantime, the town has decided to authorize a one-time payment. It's actually going to be a two-time, right? Two
One time, one?
One month, right?
One month's increase.
Covering one month's increase of the health insurance increment, just the new 20%, for benefited employees in the month of October, 2025.
In the month of, in the month of September for payment of the October, it's, it'll be done in September.
Right, to pay the October's fee. So given that, I would entertain a motion for the town to authorize a one-time payment covering one month's increase of the health insurance increment for the benefited employees for the month of October, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, don't you need an amount in there?
I don't think we do need an amount. Whatever the one month's increase is, probably covers us. Are we sure that's the exact right number? I mean, we can say, I'm not afraid of saying it, but
Yeah.
Just in case it's a couple of pennies different, you know what I mean?
Right.
You could do it not to exceed.
You feel safer if we do that, Jane?
Yeah, I just, you know, when you're looking back at minutes, trying to find out what happened last year or the year before, an incomplete motion is less than helpful.
So what is the financial effect?
Well, what we talked about last night was $1,015.01. So, and we also talked about the possibility of something changing before the actual bill is due in September. You know, somebody could change their interest up or down.
That's the risk that Brian was concerned about.
not to exceed, not to exceed $1,500, which is certainly way more than, than we would need. Like, I was going to do it just two of the most expensive Like, I was gonna do it just two of the most expensive premiums. That would, that would just be $1,200, so $1,500.
We haven't voted on that motion yet, so we can change that motion before we do. It was moved, what I read, but we have to vote to cancel that motion.
So I would move the corrected motion.
And you've moved to correct it?
Yes.
So can we, can we add in there not to exceed $1,500? So it'll read, entertain a motion for the town to authorize a one-time payment covering one month's increase of the health insurance increment, not to exceed $1,500 for the benefited employees for the month of October, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussions?
No, just as clarification for all the employees. It's for the October payment, but it comes out of your pay in September. So this will mean that the September deduction for insurance will stay the same, and you won't see the change until October.
Further clarification, we're planning on having a meeting on
Monday.
Monday.
Eleven o'clock, August 25th, here at Town Hall with the benefited employees.
And each of them have been notified?
Yes, this morning.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll need to tell Sue that, just so, while she's here, that that's what we approved it.
Yes.
She was curious about that. Okay, more to come on health insurance for the Hampshire group. The 79 communities and school districts that are affected. Next up, BES
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three? Thought it was seventy-nine, whatever the number, seventy-something.
I think I stuck seventy-nine in your head.
Probably, that's okay.
And she corrected me last time. Sorry about that.
That's okay. BES capital expenses. At the quarterly Burness and Mumentry School Maintenance Meeting, the following capital expenses were brought to our attention in an order of priority. In the staff room at BES, also known as the teacher's lounge, there is a door that goes to the exterior of the building that does not have a crash bar on it. You need to physically unlock a door before you can get to the exterior if you were in that room.
With a key.
With a key. We talked about this last fall, the school district did a little more research. They've engaged a locksmith to come look at it. He can retrofit it to a crash bar so they can, emergency egress will be much quicker and much safer. All parts and labor is a total of $900. They also brought up that several of the windows, the cranks, are broken to open and close the windows. They did have two sets of repair parts on the shelf in the school. They have fixed two of the windows. They have sourced 10 more sets to fix the other 10 windows that have the same issue. The cost to get those would be $2,302. However, the staff at the school would not be able to do those more than likely until next summer, when they have the time and it's not a heating season to have the windows open to make the repairs. That one wouldn't be as much of an emergency. It definitely needs to get fixed, but they're not gonna have time to make the repair currently if we were to buy it today. And they also have a washer and dryer that they use for mop heads, towels in the kitchen. Some of the classes have rain suits for the kids, the younger kids that the school district bought. They wash and dry them in there. It's not working well, so they'd like to replace it. Again, it's working today. It's not an emergency, that was an $1,800 item to replace. I'm proposing tonight that we just, we go after the $900 door repair and let the other two fall to a town meeting if they wanted to put them on our list, unless you gentlemen think differently?
I agree with you that 900 is something we need to address now, from a safety standpoint. The other two can wait.
And we do know we have at least 5,000 go from town meeting into there, so we should be able to cover the 900.
Right. So, my concern about their list was that it ain't up to $5,000.
It does, yeah.
And so we would have nothing to fall back on for some emergency that came along and needed to be addressed.
Correct. Because we did hit it fairly hard last fall on the air handlers in the cafeteria.
And that had accumulated over more than one year to have enough of the air handlers. So it's important that we monitor how we use this money.
Correct.
And I would like to do, pardon?
It's intended for emergencies.
Right, yeah. I'd like to follow up more on that washer and dryer because the only thing she talked about was the dryer being inefficient. She never said anything about the washer.
Washer, right, and what was wrong with that?
She did not, but they're the same age and
Yeah.
So I would entertain a motion
They don't make washers.
And what age is that?
We don't know that.
Old enough so that it's failing.
She says it's an apartment size?
I think the dryer needs a good vent cleaning.
It's a very long vent, the way she described it. It goes from the middle of the school all the way through the school, out the fire end, so it's
Poorly designed.
That might be industrial.
But the part that goes through the janitor's room is probably exposed.
Right.
And if that was the way my dryer vent was, I'd be finding out where there was a coupling in that, in that room, and I would be taking it apart.
A lint's gonna get in there.
And then somebody else would have to come and put it back together, that's a different story.
So I
Well, I only ask the age of the washer and dryer simply because some of those old, older washing machines
Last forever.
It lasts forever.
And you can work on them for some
And they're pretty simple to work on.
Last a couple of years and die.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is true.
Yeah, the new ones, the computers die, this goes, that goes.
You're way over engineered.
It's out of bounds.
Yes.
Speaking from experience, but anyway. So I will make the motion to, I'm sorry.
Yep, I entertain a motion to replace the door hardware for the staff room door using Smith's locksmith for $900 for the money to come out of the BES capital expense.
So moved.
Second.
All I need is a discussion.
Just to correct, it's not a quarterly BES maintenance meeting, it's more like every six weeks.
There you go, that's a good point.
And those aren't really capital expenses either.
Neither one, yeah.
None of them are capital, they're unanticipated or whatever you wanna call them, but they're not capital.
That's just the name of the category.
Yeah.
No, but in the beginning of your thing, you said they brought us capital expenses, and they're not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So would you give her the go-ahead?
I will.
Do that?
I wrote it down, yeah.
Have them bill us directly, correct, Jane?
Bill direct, yeah, I'll get the, yeah.
We use Smith Locksmith all the time, so that shouldn't be a big deal.
Yep.
Okay, town administrators report.
All right. So the Six Town Regional Planning Board has sent out an informational flyer to the towns to, because they wanted it to be mounted or posted onto the town website. And the STRB, the Six Town Regional Planning Board is planning to take the lead on organizing the public forums in September and October, and will be sending out invitations directly to the residents, inviting them to attend. More to come on that. The STRB is still waiting on reports from consultants, as you know, in the email that went out, you know, final draft of regional agreement, updating the assessment projections and OPEB projections. They're waiting on all that, and then they'll, they're gonna kick off with these forums, so. Burness and Country State Sewer Project update and timeline. So the advertisement for the project went out today, 8:00 this morning on Conbuys. I'm just gonna go over the timeline of the project so that you all know what's going on. 9/11 here at the town is gonna be when the bids are due, and Brian will be here, and they'll open up the bids, and the vendors will come.
Brian McHugh.
Brian McHugh, yes. And that'll happen, like I said, on 9/11. And then Huntley Associates will submit recommendation of the contract award to the Franklin County Housing Regional Authority at 9/15. And they'll review and submit award letters to whoever they select. Then on 9/17, Brian McHugh from the Regional Housing Authority will come here, visit the select board. You'll be here at your regular meeting, and you'll vote to award the contract. So that's the way forward with that. Then the housing authority will send the notice of award to the contractor. Then the select board, you're gonna be signing the contract with the contractor. And notice to proceed will be initiated on the 2nd of October. And the pre-construction should start on or about 6 October. The project end date is July, excuse me, December 31st of this year. So it's a tight timeline.
Hmm.
So, but let's keep our fingers crossed, right? It's a big project, it's been lingering for a while, so we wish the best, right?
For sure.
That's all I have.
Anybody else have anything else they wanna bring up? Jane, last chance.
Recruit for finance committee members?
Still looking for finance committee members.
And it's getting to a desperate point because one of our members is not going to seek reappointment. And when that happens, we will not have a forum, so we will not be functional. So we need members. And if people want a budget for next year, they need to come and help. We're gonna start, our next meeting is September 8th, and we will begin looking at the capital plans from each department, which they provide us every year with a five to 10-year projection, a couple of them are even out through the 10 years, which is nice. Anyway, that's where we are.
Not good.
No, not good.
So anybody who knows anybody that would
You don't have to have any special knowledge, just allowing this to help.
Right. If you can add one and one, and get two.
Well, state math is adding one and one divided by 58 times, I'm sorry.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Thanks, Brian, I think that encouraged everybody.
No, no, I'm teasing, I'm teasing.
I would like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.